Okay, so this is October 4th, 2022. This is the new school board member orientation. So I'll go ahead and start. So you have your book that I've given you, and I'm just gonna kinda go through things and highlight a couple of things as we go through. So the things you should know off the bat is that our mission is to educate all students for success. Our vision is a dynamic system of excellence. And you may wanna pull that sheet out and keep it separate because it'll probably be easier as you go through the book to have that piece separate. So the number of students we have, they count students like three times a year, once in the fall, once in the spring, and then once in the summertime. So the last count that we have a count from the state for was July 19th, 2022, when we had 19,007 students. The 19,007 students. And you'll learn more about this later. There's unweighted and there's weighted students. So the 19,007 students is 19,007 warm bodies. Then there's a weight placed on those bodies as to whether they have any, what grade level they're at, what kinda needs they have, that type of thing. So on a weighted basis, we have 21,266 students. But as far as warm bodies go, it's 19,007. That 19,007 includes charter school students as well as regular students. So that's all the students in the district. Employees, we have about 2,500 employees. Forty-seven percent of those, which is 1,167, are with MCEA, which is the Teachers Bargaining Unit. 930 of those is from Ask Me. That's the blue collar or the non-teacher other side unit. And then the non-bargaining piece is 13% or 329 students. As far as schools go, we have 11 traditional elementary schools, five middle schools, three high schools, and two alternative schools. That takes up 91.5% of the students. The charter students take up another 8.5% of our students. And we have Clark. We have Hope. Clark is the one that's with Indian River State College that has grades 10, 11, and 12. Then we have Hope. Then we have Hope Academy. So there's two Hopes that are sitting there. We have TCCA, Treasure Coast Classical. Then we also have Indian Town High School. Then we have two new ones that we've been recently approved that are coming in. One is Treasure Coast Classical Academy North, and the other one is Techno Arts. So that would, but right now, we have 8.5%. Just so you have that. I said Indian Town High School. Yeah. Is one of the ones that's already there. So one of the ones, the ones that we have already in place, back again, is Clark, which is through Indian River State College. Two that are Hope. One is Hope and one is Hope Academy. Then we have Indian Town High School. And then we have the other ones that we have recently approved, Treasure Coast Classical Academy. Then two that we've recently approved, which is Treasure Coast Classical North and also Techno Arts. The 2022-23 enrollment that if you're looking at what we have as far as traditional students is about 16,714 traditional students, 1,538 charter students, which makes up the 18,252, plus 790, which are the Florida Education Scholarship, which is 18,982. So there's a difference between that 18,982 and the 19,007. Not a really significant difference. The, if you look backwards, which I'll show you where you can find that later. If you look backwards at our enrollment, the enrollment in Martin County doesn't really change as much as in other communities. A lot of communities have a lot of fluctuation in enrollment, which puts a lot of pressure on buildings and that type of thing. We don't really have that. We have a fluctuation of 100 or 200 every year. So it isn't really a big issue. Our operating traditional budget for the traditional side is $143 million, which puts about 8,600 or 8,700 per student, plus the additional 13.7 million, which came from the millage reauthorization, which adds another 820. Just so you have that in your head, that that's the operating piece of the budget. I'll show you where that is in these books in a minute. But it's about a 10% bump from that millage piece, just under a 10% bump. You'll also see that, and we do share that with the charter. So it's based on an FTE per charter schools also. So it's per student. The number gets divided by student and it follows the student or whatever school they're at. Okay, role of a school board member. So when you, as life goes on, you're going to get the additional training or have the ability to get the additional training from the Florida School Board Association. And there's things in here that will help you, but I'm just trying to give you an overview here. So mainly, a school board member is concerned with policy and budget. Operations are left to the superintendent, who the school board hires. But policy and budget is what we look at. As far as policy goes, we do reviews and changes. When we change the policy, there's a procedure that we go through. The first step that we go through is, if it's something that's significant, not that everything isn't significant, but if it's something that there's a lot of choice to, you'll see it go through a workshop first. There's, sometimes there's policies that need to be changed because of something from statute. So imagine if the statute or the state came through and said, "Oh, instead of this being 60 days, it needs to be 90 days." Or instead of this being, you know, A, it needs to be B. You know, those type of things that are pushed through, it's pretty much statute-driven. We don't really have any control over it. So we could discuss it at a workshop, but it really doesn't make much sense to discuss it at a workshop because it's something that's just going to happen. Then there's two opportunities after that. One is the first read, which is an advertising approval. And then the second one is the final read. So when it goes to the advertising approval, that's the first time you'll see it at a board meeting. And then if we make, at that point in time, if we make significant changes to it then, then it needs to start over and be advertised again as to what it's going to be, so that the public knows. And then there's the final approval after that. And then it becomes part of what our policy is. As far as budgets go, we start our workshops in the beginning of the year, usually in January and February. Our operating budget is approved by June and our capital budget is set by September. Okay? Capital budget consists mainly of buildings, technology, and transportation. Those are kinda like the three pieces that go into the capital budget. Operating budget is everything else. So that includes textbooks, transportation, you know, driving, all the personnel, those type of pieces, paper towels, supplies, electricity, utilities, all of those pieces. So if you look in your Tab A, your Tab A is a document that we use, which is the Mark County School Board Operating Guidelines, which we look at and we redo kind of like every, the beginning of every year. So in that, if you click through to like the next page, you'll see that it's kinda broken down in the table of contents. It gives you some information about the sunshine law. I know that you probably have heard from the Florida School Board Association.
We got a book, actually.
You got some, yeah, you got some information about that. And the interesting thing about the sunshine law is that, you know, so it doesn't prohibit you from being in the same place. So for instance, if another school board member and I both wanted to be at a Chamber of Commerce meeting or something, it doesn't prohibit you from being in the same room at the same place. But the concern is that there would be a temptation, since people would know that you're on the school board, that people would ask you a question. "What do you think about the SOD at Indian Town Middle School?" You know? And that once you start discussing those things with another school board member present, it may be something that you would vote on in the future. So that creates a problem because it's a discussion that wasn't hap, didn't happen in the sunshine with the correct advertisement so that everybody in the public would know what two board members think at the same time. So usually, if you're there at the same time, if your discussions have nothing to do with that, that's pretty easy. The problem is that since the public views you as a school board member, their questions tend to be things that are related to public education. And since they're related to public education, it puts you in a position all of a sudden where...
So it's best just to avoid it at all costs.
Yeah. So usually it's best, so usually what you'll see is you'll see that one person will bow out. You know, like, "Excuse me, I'm gonna go over there." Just not be in the same area. Because the thing you don't wanna do is you don't wanna be non-responsive to your constituents and you don't wanna not listen to them. But at the same time, you wanna be kinda careful that you're not having a discussion with somebody at the same time. Yes. So that's the easiest way. And usually, I just tell people, you know, "Hey, based on sunshine law, you know, it's probably better that the two of us aren't standing here in the middle of this discussion because it won't, you know." And so it doesn't look like I have a small bladder or something and have to keep running to the bathroom, so. As far as your correspondence comes, correspondence will come in to the office. It will have your name on it. You'll have a box. Your correspondence will be put in the box. If you don't want your correspondence to be opened by the office, you can request that they not open your correspondence. If that's, if that happens, then you need to be aware that you're responsible for maintaining the public record of that correspondence. So if you want them to just, you know, let's, usually, the rule of thumb I use is that people send me personal mail at home. They send me office mail at the office. If it says "personal" on it, I usually get a call from the office that says, "Hey, we got a personal letter from Jane Doe. What do you want me to do?" Kind of thing. And then I can decide from there what I wanna do with it. But I found that it's better to let some of those records that are coming in here be maintained by the office rather than being maintained by myself. So if you flip through this area, page six gives you that breakdown again that talks about what the school board does and what the superintendent does. So the school board pretty much directs through policy and through budget. And the superintendent does the administrative piece. So we decide what, and then he figures out how. I mean, so that's the way that it goes. We monitor progress. He reports progress. We designate positions and approve job descriptions. He directs the employees' works and recommends the duties for those people. So that kinda gives you a pretty good breakdown of what that looks like. The next page, page seven. So unlike other elective offices, as a school board member, you have no authority and you have no power unless we're acting as a board. So you don't have the ability to make promises to people to get things get-er done, you know, any of that kinda stuff. You don't have the ability to do that. The board has the ability to do that. So if it's operational in nature, whether it's a letter, whether it's a phone call, whether it's email, if it's operational in nature, the best practice is considered to forward it to the superintendent, to let the person know. You know, you can respond to the email, respond to something and say, "Hey, I'm forwarding this to the superintendent because he's the chief operating officer. He's the one who takes care of operations of the district. I'm being asked..." I usually say, "I'm being asked to be kept in the loop just so that I know what the resolution is."
Is it okay to just forward it to the superintendent and put their email on it? In other words, if I get an email from someone and I'm forwarding it to Dr. Malley, can I?
Oh, yeah. And then I just add theirs onto it.
Okay. I don't have to do two separate?
No.
Okay.
And so I usually forward it and I answer the email. And in the answer to the email, as I'm replying to it, I include him in the distribution and just say, just so you know, "I received your, you know, your question, you know. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, etc. I forwarded it to Dr. Malley. He will get back to you, you know. If you have any further questions after he gets back to you or, you know, something, please let me know." And then I usually just put a little note, you know, "Dr. Malley, please keep me in the loop." You know, so then he kind of knows that if it's, whatever it is that he's handling, it doesn't become something that falls off the plate and you kind of know what the answer is. So that, so that later, you don't get an answer different from someone than what the answer is that he actually gave out. So you're kind of included in that loop. So that kind of helps.
All right.
And sometimes, you'll see there on that page seven, sometimes if it's something that your fellow board members would be interested or had an interest in. So let's think of a situation where that would occur. So imagine if it was, had to do with, let's say, something that we would all be interested in. Let's say it's a career technical fair or something. "Hey, I'm like calling, I'm sending you an email to let you know that there's a career technical fair that's being run by so-and-so that you might have some interest in doing. But I notice in the distribution list that I'm the only one that it came to." You know, that type of thing.
So you tag them on to it?
So then I would tag them on to it. And they all know, and I usually put on there, but they, everybody pretty much knows, "Don't reply to this email." So you're allowed to share information with other people. You're not allowed, a conversation happens when you're going back and forth about it. But you're allowed to give information to other people.
Just the one reply to the email.
Yes, yes. So I usually put on there, you know, "Please, do not reply all, etc." And just deal with it that way. So that kind of takes care of that.
And sometimes I'll get an email like recently, say, every board member may have gotten an email from a parent on an issue, whatever it is. And they may copy me. Sometimes they'll send it to the whole board and copy me. If I catch that early, fast, I'll reply "all" and say, just so they know, "Thank you, I'm researching this. That puts you all noticed that I have it." If I can see it fast enough. Or sometimes they'll send them individually. And when I, I'll be, I'll be the only one that knows that because it'll be your name and me. It'll be her name separately emailing me. I'll, I may send something that says, "I received, each of you may have received an email. I am, this is under investigation," or it is. Just so you know, because you don't, you wanna be careful not to be part of it. But I know you know what wants to be, I want you to know I'm on it.
Okay.
And you can still talk to me. You know, I just, it's kind of a courtesy because sometimes you don't know what to say. You know, you're, and you might, it might save you a phone call. Keeps me from getting five phone calls real quick. You know, that type of thing.
Yeah, and a lot of times, in most cases, you know, when somebody has something that, I wouldn't say in most cases, but quite frequently, there's more to the story than what you first heard.
Oh, I know.
There's more to, you know, there's a, there's a deeper backstory. They, a part of it has been left off or something. And you know, it's kind of a, so it's... Another thing which, I think I have it further in here somewhere, but there's a difference between things. I think it's...
Bless you.
Bless you. Let me continue on this before I go into here. So our job as a school board member, bless you, is to kind of protect and promote the organization. So we are like, because we are like the board of directors for this large corporation is what we are. So that's what our function is in doing this. And then there's, there's people that the board specifically hires and then everybody else is left to the operating officer to do the hiring for that. So the people that we specifically hire would be the superintendent, attorney, and auditor if we decide. And we've had an auditor in the past. We don't right now. We have that subbed out to someone. Okay? But that's the way that life typically works. We're kind of the community liaison. We're the communicator that facilitates a relationship between the other people in our organization. So we're kind of the, you know, because you'll run into people. He, he's not everywhere all the time and you're the one that people have actually seen and have a face to. And because you're an elected person, you're the one that people will come up to in Publix and be sharing things with and that type of thing. So you're the kind of, the person that's in between those pieces, you know, like... And people will share all kinds of things, you know. And some of it you know and some of it you don't know. Some of it, they don't know the whole story. Some of it, you know, I mean, it's those type of things. It's, you know, and we saw it, well, you see it all the time. I mean, you see it, you know, it's kind of like, well, let's take this most recent thing with, let's say it's a hurricane and schools are being closed. Well, some things that a lot of people don't realize or recognize is that we are, that our schools are the shelters in Martin County. So that if we're told or we're asked to open shelters, we are the ones opening shelters. And we don't have shelters in schools at the same time. So you'll have people that will say to you in a grocery store or something, you know, "Well, I don't understand why your, you know, why are your schools closed? You know, there isn't anything..." And it's like, "Yeah, yeah, you know, well, where are the shelters in Martin County?" And, you know, "They have to get ready to open those shelters up, so that's why we have to close," you know. And it's that kind of thing. It's something that they don't know. So you're kind of like that community person that they put the face on, that you have some of those answers to, that gets it before it gets all riled up to the, you know, "Why would they do?" You know, I mean, that whole, "It's miles away." You know, it's, I mean, it's, you get all that kind of thing. So page 12 in here talks a little bit about media and public relations. We're kind of fortunate now with a public information officer. So when there's, when you get your cellphone, you're gonna end out being on a, it's called a board alert. So it's an alert that's sent to us anytime there's an incident or happening in one of our schools. What that does is it puts you in a position so that if you're somewhere, anywhere, you know, you're at church, you're at the grocery store, you're at a, you know, downtown, you're at a restaurant, that if somebody comes up and starts to say, "Hey, I just heard, you know, there was a gas leak on Cove Road." Or there was, you know, or somebody got hurt here. Or, you know, any little thing that people hear, we've gotten the board alert that's kind of already told us. So we have some, so we're not standing there like, "Really? What was that? Tell me what you know." You know, it isn't that kind of thing. At least you have some background and you're kept up to date on it.
And the staff is aware and working on it. Sometimes it's just the knowledge and he has to work on it.
But instead of that deer in the headlights, "Really? I didn't even..." Or let's say a bus. A bus, a bus breaks down on a road or a bus runs into something or something like that. And somebody will say it to you so instead of you being the, "When did that happen? You know, what bus was it? You know, what time?" You know, instead of being that kind of thing, it's more that you already know. If it's something that you didn't get a board alert on, then my, my feeling is that you should immediately call the superintendent and say, "Hey, I just got this weird phone call that, you know..."
Or text means, "Hey, call me."
Just so you know, you know, "I don't know what's wrong with this." Because he only knows what he knows.
Right.
You know? And sometimes it's, and sometimes it's, it's interesting because with social media, sometimes people are reading feeds that are from completely different states and they think something happened here that didn't happen here. Or something that happens in St. Lucie County comes across on somebody's Facebook feeds and then they, they share it. You know, "Hey, I just heard that, you know, one of your teachers did blah, blah, blah." And we're like, "Really?" You know, and we have no idea. You didn't get a board alert. And then it turns out then when you refer it to the superintendent's office, they track it down. It's like, "Oh, that wasn't even in here. That's in Texas."
Well, and the challenge is, I mean, this, I think the community will know when I say it, it's the truth. Something gets a rumor started. Untrue, but do I call the office and get it clarified or do I go to social media? Did anybody else hear about, and they put a question out and it kinda, you know how the rumor travels and some, by the time somebody else hears, it sounds like it was something that didn't even happen. But, so I always encourage people, "If you have a question, let me know, but I'll, I'll research it. I will get back with you." And they're probably gonna get back with the whole board and say, "Let me know." Rumors, sometimes things could pop out there and we don't even get to see the social media site till a little while, but you might. Or another board member, so I appreciate it.
Okay.
If you hear a little something, I can say.
Yeah, it's amazing the number of people who get their information from Facebook. Yeah, Facebook is like the number one place to find out every, pretty much everything, right? Uh, we get every week, since we've had Dr. Malley as a superintendent, every week we get a superintendent's update. So that's an email that comes to all the board members. It kinda goes department by department. It kinda tells, it gives you a synopsis of what's going on in each department, what each department is working on, what they're doing, et cetera. So it's kind of like, just keeps you kinda fresh as far as that goes. I, I would say that, that we're fortunate that we have a appointed superintendent that knows how to be a superintendent. Um, because it understands that that level of communication needs to happen between the board and the superintendent and that we need to keep updated. So I mean, I think that that's really good. Uh, we also get copies. You'll get copies of all the, um, press releases and all the notifications that go out. All that stuff will be pushed in through your cellphone so that you'll be able to see all of that. So you kinda know what's, what they're doing out there.
And just one other thing, it's, uh, I try to be consistent with the board, but every one of, every board member's a little different. Some like a different level of communication, some, some have different roles in the community. So it's like, they want more or less or need. But I'll, I try to give it all, but if you, if you feel like you need some more information, I'll cust-, you know, I, I can give you more. So just, if, if I can, but feel free, if you get it, you feel like you kinda need to know more, reach out to me. I, I can probably say more in a conversation than I might put in a written. I always gotta be careful with some of the things I put because if it's an investigation going on, it's, it could be an open record later. And it could be used. So I, I try to give enough to let you know, but in per, um, conversation, I can sometimes say a little more. But just, just so you know, if you, if you wanna know more, feel free or say, hey, maybe you call me on it, or maybe you know a piece of the puzzle we don't know.
So, um, so we don't do operations and that includes personnel and student matters. So it's like, we don't, um, it, it is not our function to say, here's the perfect person. Look, this person just moved to town. This is the perfect person for this job. Obviously you can refer somebody, you know, hey, but there's a whole process that it goes through and we don't have the power to sit there and say, um, this is the person that we want, I mean individually.
We're not in the business of hiring.
Um, the way that it works is that the superintendent, we have jobs, we have positions and we have position descriptions. The superintendent's job is to recommend people for those positions, which we then have to approve. If we don't want to approve it for some reason, it ha- it, it has to be for a cause and the cause would typically be that the person's not qualified. So that would be, you know, but if a person is qualified for a job and the superintendent's recommending the person for the job, it's kind of hard to think of an instance where it would be like, well, no, we don't wanna accept that because it's, I mean, because that could be all kinds of other problems. So that's just something.
And from time to time, there may be not be anybody that meets qualifications, but they're good because maybe it's an old job description. But I, if I bring that to the board, like we have a great person, but none of the people have this. But I just make that apparent to you all and then it's up to you to say that final, you know, it's always a recommendation and you can say, no, repost it, or I just try to be real transparent. And once in a while, uh, usually we interview everybody. But say you have somebody on staff that's been in department where we, we have it like, it's just a natural, it's not always, but they truly, because of institutional knowledge, they need to be the person. Somebody left us high and dry and I have to appoint somebody. From, from a time, there's, uh, appointments. So sometimes like we're hiring somebody new and sometimes I'm reassigning someone. They'll still go before you. So I, I sometimes I give you a little heads up, an email, just say, hey, we have this natural progression. There may not have been the whole formal interview process because it's like they've been the assistant for so long. It's a reassignment. It's usually someone you all would know or you're comfortable with too, or the staff. It's no controversy. I don't usually do that, but anyway.
So on page twenty, we talk about the different kinds of meetings that we could possibly have. So our regular meetings, right now we're scheduled for the third Tuesday of every month. It is a school board meeting. It is not the superintendent's meeting. It is a meeting that is done by the school board. We're acting upon recommendations of the superintendent, but it is our meeting. I know that, that there's been some lack of clarity on that issue from time to time, that this is, that, that there may have been people in the past who think that, no, 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 this is the superintendent's agenda. This is what the superintendent wants. This is, you know, and we're just the mere rubber stamps of that. That's not true. I mean, the board chair works with the superintendent to get things on an agenda, to have things with enough information so that board members feel comfortable making a decision on it. Um, once the agenda drops, you have seven days. It's posted for the public and for you. Right now you're getting those agendas printed for you, but if you, you can say, I don't want them printed. I want them digitally or however you wanna do it. But during that time, if you review the agenda, it gives you the opportunity to then talk to the superintendent and get whatever additional information you need. And you may need something that, um, one or more of us may need something that is a different direction or a different piece than what, you know, the superintendent may be making a recommendation that we do, you know, whatever, that we give coffee in all the elementary schools, you know, that we do free coffee for everybody in the elementary school. That he thinks this is, you know, the caffeine would be great and everybody would be charged up and this would be something and you may be like, I don't really know whether this is something that, you know. And you may want more information, more, you know, so we have the ability for all the things that are on a consent agenda, to take any of those things on a consent agenda and say, I, I need to push it off and I need more information. It's best to kind of like let the superintendent know ahead of time because it may be information that he has the answer to right, right then and there. You know, it may be, hey, this is something that's gonna be coming like, you know, the state's planning on passing it in two weeks. So we could just, you know, like, go ahead and start on it now. We'd be like, oh, okay. Or it may be something that, you know, no, 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 I need more information. I wanna get more information. And, and it may be more than one person who needs more information. It may be more than one. If it's something that's on the action agenda, you also have the ability and you'll find that with the camaraderie that we have and the respect that we have for each other as board members, if there's something on that agenda that makes you feel uncomfortable that you want more information from, for, unless it's something that's really timely that has to be done right then and there, you'll find that your fellow board members will kind of like understand that in order for you to do your job the way that you wanna do it, it needs more information. It needs more time. It needs maybe to go to a workshop. It needs more data to it. It needs something. Um, so, so anything that you see on that agenda that, um, you don't feel comfortable with and you don't have the information for, you should speak up, but it, it's usually best to speak up before we get to the meeting just so that we know. So you'll notice at the meetings, it's like, um, is there anything that anybody wants to take from the consent agenda and move it to the action items so that we can discuss it as an action item? Is there anything that anybody, you know, so you can move something that way. And every once in a while, you'll have somebody who says, um, and this piece, and often the superintendent will go ahead and do it. He'll go ahead and pull the item off. You know, cause it's kinda like, you can put that on there, but hey, you need to know, Dr. Malley, when it gets there, I'm gonna say that I think we should have this, this information before we do this. And since we don't have that information, I'm gonna, and, and he kind of understands the roles and responsibilities and is very respectful and will be like, okay, well, there's no real timeliness to this. I don't really need to do this like this week, this month. So I'm gonna go ahead and pull it. And you'll see things on that agenda that get pulled and taken off, um, to come back another time. I mean, so you'll see that.
So that would be in our communication with him on a monthly basis?
And I, I meet generally with every board member, but I don't discuss with, um, but I can also, but if I know, hey, I, this is just my own knowledge. I'm meeting with three without saying, I heard from, I don't say I heard from Marsha, I heard from, but I just know four do not like this. Four want information. It's like, I'm gonna just take that all, cause I just know I need to do more background or I'm not gonna put the board in that situation. If I see something that's, where, even if it's two, if two are really bad or, you know.
Or one really mouthy one.
Well, it doesn't matter, but I, the whole goal is to make the meeting run smooth and, um, if it's controversial, get the information, make sure I've done it. Maybe it's one more one-on-one. It's like, hey, I gotta back up here. I need to get some more information. Sometimes I just don't have it. I mean, we don't have some of the information we need. We're just going the very best. And ninety-five percent of what's on every agenda, maybe ninety percent is pretty routine for each month. And there's always about ten percent and a lot of us say renew where it's, where most experienced board members know it. It's something they've done like the last year, these certain contracts or, uh, things that are timely, like certain times of the year, you approve certain things for food service. You do code of conduct generally at certain times of the year. You do certain calendar, you're gonna deal with that probably November. So some things are routine, but we want you to feel comfortable.
Yeah. Um, workshops, workshops is where we go into, those are usually at the beginning of the month. And workshops, we go into things more in-depth. We don't make any decisions at workshops. We give direction at workshops. So there may be something that we discuss at a workshop, but it's, it's kinda like, well, do we want to do this? You know, is this something that we're interested in? You know, so imagine if it was, um, it, let's say we're talking about different, um, career technical opportunities for training or something and somebody on staff says, well, you know, I found this really good training thing for, um, butchers, meat butchers, you know? And if they brought it to the workshop, we may all be like, no, we're not, you know, we're not, that isn't something we wanna do. Or it may be something where we're like, oh, yeah, yeah, you know, I think being, you know, creating the next generation of butchers is a wonderful idea, you know? So, but I mean, it gives us a chance to informally discuss something, to get more information and to give direction so that it can go, it can either go somewhere, it can get more information, or it can go away. So you'll see the same thing happen. So we, that's why we take policies to, um, workshops ahead of time. That's why the code of conduct goes to a workshop ahead of time. That's why a lot of those things go to a workshop ahead of time to kinda be like, okay, where did you wanna go with this? How did you want, because it gets too cumbersome to do that at a meeting. At a meeting when you're supposed to be trying to get through something, it's like, that becomes an issue. Um, from time to time, we will have special meetings and a special meeting is something where we've got like one item that needs to be done. It may be approving bus routes that weren't ready at a certain time, but now they are ready. Or it may be in order to get something moving by a certain time.
It's a time sensitive.
Yeah, we're trying to get the code of conduct done so that it can be printed and given to students so that it's in place on the first day of school. But to get the code of conduct done, it's gotta go through a process and it's gotta have this extra meeting. But if we don't have a meeting in between, then we're kinda stuck because we don't have the ability to do it. So we'll have an extra special meeting to kinda stick it in there to be able to get things to move so that they wanna get from point A to point B. The, there are certain things, so we have executive sessions. Executive sessions are the, a very narrowly defined meeting, which is closed to the public. So that has to do with, um, a student hearing, a student, say a student expulsion hearing where, well, that isn't even an executive session. Stop me back up. Executive session is say bargaining, okay? When we wanna discuss bargaining. When we wanna discuss real estate or things that have to do with that. When we wanna discuss school safety. Um, when we wanna discuss, um, legal strategies. So let's say we're in the middle of some kind of lawsuit or something and we need to discuss a legal strategy. Those attorney-client things are able to be done like that. Student hearings, student discipline matters, um, are also something that is often closed to the public. Unless the parent says, yeah, I want it to be open to the public. The parent can say, no, 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 I want this to be a private expulsion hearing. Saying this is something that I don't want. Okay? In November, we do a reorg meeting. Um, what that means is we elect a chair and a vice chair and we designate the meeting times for the next year. So what you're gonna see in, um, at November's workshop, you will get an advanced view of the calendar for the next year that will be setting what the trim dates are, what the workshop dates are, et cetera. And trying to take some consideration into, you don't wanna have, um, a date like say January second because people are still on holiday or something like that, or, or a meeting during, you know, those type of things. I mean, if the Fourth of July fell on a Tuesday, it's like, well, you obviously don't wanna have a meeting on that day. So the calendar will be, um, on the workshop calendar or on the workshop agenda in November just to, for people to kind of look at. So if anybody has anything, they wanted to say, they would be able to say it, but then, um, we would be actually voting on it and approving it in November. So since you all are in the position where you're not board members at the November workshop, if you had concerns with that November calendar, you need to have those ready. We won't discuss them so much at the workshop, but we'll, we'll discuss them at the meeting. So if you have anything on that calendar.
And you could talk to me.
You can talk to him.
And I'll make note of, as a board member, some of the things. And typically in between, I talk to the chair, just say, I've heard from board members, there's, there's one or two sensitive of these dates. It's just FYI.
Yeah.
But then.
So to have some kind of alternative so that we know when we're voting on. I did that. On page thirty. Page thirty kind of gives you a, like a general calendar of ongoing things that happen in the district. So the academic calendar for the next year usually comes out in November and December. There's a calendar committee that meets that decides what the calendar, so that calendar committee is getting ready to meet now. They will be making a recommendation, recommendation to the board in November and December for the calendar for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Okay? So, uh, bus routes come out in July. Code of Conduct is usually April, May. There's a dual enrollment articulation agreements. That's the agreements we have with say Indian River State College that say, um, how students would be able to, it's like a, a contract that says how they would be able to get credits from both college and from us. Um, the five-year capital plan is a September item. Um, we don't use the internal auditor work list, but if we did, you'd see that in July. The medical insurance renewal is usually in February. So I'll, there's another page in here that has that insurance calendar that you'll get to. Textbook adoption, so textbooks get adopted. There's a rotating cycle. Um, last year was English Language Arts. This year, no, last year was math. The year before was English Language Arts. This year is social studies. So there's this rotating calendar that like every five years textbooks get hit again. And then you're asked to, hey, you need to come up with people who might wanna serve as reviewing on those textbook committees. So there's elementary, middle and high school. You get those things, but that usually happens. There's a very set and precise way that textbooks get adopted that's kind of set by the state. So what happens is first the state has a committee that reviews publishers and decides these are the approved publishers. So what, that list comes to the district and these are the publishers that we can consider. Then once we get the list that we can consider, we then have committees, a committee that then goes through and sees what they think best suits our local community. Then they make a recommendation to the board. Once they ma- make a recommendation to the board, there's all these time constraints where the board has, they have to announce it. The board then considers it. Then the board can say they're interested in adopting this. Then there's a thirty-day period where there can be an objection, where somebody in the community can come out and say, I don't like that book because of, you know, for whatever reason, I don't like the way it portrays something, or I think we can do better, et cetera. Then there has to be a special magistrate hearing, the special magistrate, there's, so there's this period of time that the magistrate has to review it. Once the magistrate reviews it and rules on it, then it comes back and then the board can find, do the final adoption piece. Once they do the final adoption, then the books can be ordered. So there's this whole like timeframe of things that have to happen, that have to take into account the thirty-day window in case you're gonna need the thirty-day window, you know, that type of thing.
And we give a time, and we always give you a timeline early to say what it's gonna be. So if you have representatives or wanna send somebody. And just so you all know, at the end of the day, I'm only ever gonna recommend things approved by the Department of Ed. So if it's not approved and vetted there, it won't go to you as far as, I mean, the, the committee is careful with that too, but at the end of the day, I just legally, I feel like I have to do things that are, there's, the board can choose supplemental things. That's, you're always purview, but just, that's a safety note to you. When people say, why did you adopt that? It, it is approved by the state of Florida. It's endorsed by the department and.
So now you'll notice that we had a little hiccup last year. That was the math textbook. So the hiccup that happened was that after, so we had gotten the original list that these were the publishers that were approved. Then we started the review process, that we did the adoption piece. So we're following the calendar going on down. And then the hiccup was that, um, new, new information comes, which, you know, new information can come at any time, that wait a minute, here, these publishers are no longer approved. So then the first thing you have to do then is you have to look at, well, the publishers that aren't approved, how does that match up to our list? And low and behold, yes, some of the publishers that weren't approved were not on the list that we had. So obviously, well, maybe not obvious to the rest of the world, but kind of obviously in my mind, it, there's, you can't fight that. You need to accept that's what the ruling is and say, okay, well, if I can't have ABC book, then I need to look at what my alternative is for not having ABC book. And then let that book, let the new book go through the same process where it gets to have the thirty-day objection period, et cetera. So you can't, you can insert another one. So that's when the board was sitting there saying, okay, well then we wanna adopt this book for our elementary school math book. So now, once we've done the adoption, now it's got the thirty-day windows for an objection period, et cetera. So it kind of like adds it back in. It was early enough in our process. Some people would say it should have happened way before, but it was early enough in the process where we could deal with it and be like, okay, well, this is what we have to do. There were a couple of subjects where there was only one textbook. So there might've been three that were approved initially on the list, but then later it was like, well, this is the only one that's approved. Well then, okay, well, we can reconvene the textbook adoption committee and they can look at it, but the reality is if we don't adopt that book, we can't, we can't teach that course. So it's, somebody has done the job for us. So we might as well just go ahead and adopt that book, let it go through the wait period, et cetera, you know, the thirty-day period and just, and, and keep moving. I mean, rather than, you know, so that's kind of a, a reality. But I mean, I think those things kind of always happen. There's always additional information. There's always something else happening. Um, and I think it's, it's, I think it's a personality thing as to whether, um, I don't wanna say you can roll with the punches, but you can adapt to change. Or whether you get yourself embedded in the, well, that's just plain wrong. Nobody can do, you know, it's like, okay, yeah, okay, do that all you want, but at the end of the day, life goes on and we need to just keep going. I mean, we can't, you know, belabor things that we have no.
Control.
So anyway, you also have, um, textbook adoption, the org chart, professional development plan comes every year, safety plan, salary schedule, staffing plan. So you have all of these different things. In June, we designate two board members to be the legislative liaison and an alternate. In August, we designate somebody to be the person on the value adjustment board. And then I kind of redid those things and put them in a calendar list so you could see them kind of month by month. So it's the same information, but just kind of in a monthly thing. So you can kinda have it in your head that this is the order that things happen in. Um, and you can actually, you know, with board docs, um, you can go back and you can look at, um, things that have, things that have happened before, like how something has happened before. So like if you wanted to take, say it was, um, the technology plan and you wanted to see old technology plans and you wanted to compare what those technology plans looked like through time, you know, that type of thing. Um, you have the ability to do that because board docs has all that information in there, so. Um, let's see. Page thirty-five, that talks about things that you should be getting at some point in time. So the school superintendent's office is gonna arrange for you to get your business cards, your name badge, your little thing that you have like this, that if you push this button a bunch of times, something really exciting happens.
And she's tested it.
Yeah, but if you push it, but they say.
Doesn't Frank come running?
Well, if you push it, I think if you hold it down, the police.
Few times a year. It tests the system. She asked, the question was how long has it happened much by accident? And it has two, three, three or four times, like teachers might be carrying up books, but we've liked it because it doesn't happen much and it tests the system, you know.
So like I could push it twice now and Frank will show up, right?
He will.
Three times? Yeah, you can do it, Marsha.
Yeah, he will.
Are you gonna do it? I'll do it.
And every police officer in the county is.
No, they're not going to unless you hold it down, right?
Testing.
Ready? One, two, three. Okay. And just wait. It works. So they, when they told us at one point, that if you have something and you need something, like, like if you needed assistance. Push it. No, 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 don't do anything. Just wait. If you press it three times, if you just need assistance, like if you need somebody to lift up a box for you or open a door for you, or, you know, help you to your car. You know, but somebody, if you push it three times like that, somebody's supposed to magically show up where you are and say, what do you need? And so I'm thinking somebody's gonna come real quick and say, what do you need?
They probably know it's you.
Well, they do, cause they see who it is, but they should still come.
And they also see location.
Yes. Yeah, and they see location and everything. So it kind of sits so that it's kind of shielded so that it doesn't, yeah. So it's. No, no, he'll come. He's gonna show up. I have no doubt that there's, I have complete confidence in the system.
This is all I'm holding on camera.
Yes, that's good. Um, so you'll also get a name badge. You'll also get a P card and have to sign something that says you understand how to use your P card and that, um, you do that, you'll get a key, you'll get all that information. And you'll also, um, you should be talking to technology to tell them whether you want an iPad or whether you want a laptop, you know, which computer you think would best suit.
What are you guys use?
So I use a computer. What do you use, Marsha?
It went all out.
No, it didn't.
So Frank just said, um, I use a laptop.
Yeah, I use a laptop. It did not go all out. Did he really? Well, he should be coming here to see what the problem is.
I didn't get an alert. He said, Lord, it's all that.
I'm sure he's gonna be coming any minute now.
Any minute.
We hope. Okay, on page thirty-six. Page thirty-six, so each board member besides serving on the board serves on one of a variety of committees. So you may be the representative to, there's some community committees, which are the ones that are up in that top bunch. Children's Services Council, Clark Management Advisory Board, Council for the Arts, Education Foundation, School Health Advisory Council, Ocean Breeze or Treasure Coast Council of Local Governments. Then there's some internal ones, which includes, um, the school calendar committee, the insurance committee, code of conduct committee, that separate group that's down there. And then we all work together on the budget rather than having one person on the budget committee. So, um, in December.
Is this rotation year?
Yeah, you kind of indicate what things you want. Can somebody text him and find out why he's not coming?
Well, I texted him to let him know it wasn't an emergency, but cause I don't want everybody alarmed.
Well, it didn't, like no alarm. So normally if you're at a school and you hold it down, all kinds of things happen and then a little alarm goes up and everything, but I'm just surprised. I mean, normally he's like right here.
Well, he's right there, coming right now.
Oh, he was off site in transit. That's why, okay.
If you press it numerous times, I don't think there's a number, but if you press it just numerous times, the lights will either go blue or red. The three times, nothing visually happens. Someone should come to you.
And it should come really quickly. Like I could be lying.
Driving on US one.
But I could be like lying on the floor, you know, with a cut on my leg or something, bleeding out here, waiting for somebody to come after the three pushes and. Yeah, that's not happening. So anyway, so you'll get a chart. Um, if you look at, let me think which one it is. If you look at, C, attachment C. Attachment C shows you the chart. C? C here. This C.
Oh, C, okay.
That's C. You'll see that chart. So that kind of shows you what, and in the, for the chambers of commerce, right? Since we're five board members and five chambers of commerce, what usually happens is there's a board member that goes to each chamber of. that goes to each chamber of commerce. So that if we need something, whether it's a letter of support for legislative things, if it's getting information out about something, you know, that type of thing, that there's a person who can go to each chamber, that's at each chamber of commerce that can share that information. Okay?
And when you take office, you'll appoint members to like the textbook committee or whatever. You can, you're, you're, you could be thinking, 'cause your committee members will go on the committee.
There.
There he is.
Thank you. So this is how it works. So if you push it three times, then somebody comes to see if you need something. We were just, we were doing our new board member orientation and I was explaining how the thing worked.
Worked well.
Thank you very much.
It's got to.
Why did we get it for three things?
So me, for staff, myself and Sergeant sending
A call.
Just in case I'm not in the office.
They can back up.
There's backup.
Oh, okay, all right.
So they get it.
Tell everybody that.
Okay.
Is everything all right over there? I said, "I'm outside, I'm on my way to have a try that."
Okay, good. All right. Well, thank you for checking on us.
And we could do a test at one time and I could show you how old the system is.
Oh, we didn't do that part.
We could do a test whenever you guys want.
That'd be another-
Yeah, that could be another check.
He loves showing it off, so.
Maybe we could do that in a little bit.
Yeah, we only do that at the school center at different times, so that's where you can see everything going on. PA system.
Oh, that'll be fun, yeah.
The TVs come on, tells you what to do.
That'll be great, okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it. So if I had been lying bleeding on the floor, he would call like 911 and then an ambulance would come for me. So anyway, so this is the page, and it kind of gives you off to the side. It tells you what the meeting schedule is for each of these, like how often each of these have a meeting. So like, you'll see that, say, the school calendar committee, that meets in the fall in early evenings. That type of thing, okay? So you'll be turning this in. You'll be asked for this in December. And then, then it will be the chair, whoever the chair is, will then say, "Okay, well, this is what we've done." And it's not written in stone. I mean, there may be like three people who all wanna be on the calendar committee, but when we have the discussion about it, somebody will give and you'll be able to, it works out. It's not that, okay. Um, let's see. Page forty-three has a little bit of information about that master board training, you know, that we have that scheduled. I'll go back to your first tab, first tab forty-three, sorry, tab A forty-three. That talks a little bit about master board training, since we have two additional people on the board. We'll be doing master board training again. We're gonna be doing that in the January piece. And we'll, and then there's two more modules after that. But it's, it's like governance training. It's, it's how to work, it's kind of like a team building kind of thing and kind of like getting to know your board members better and getting to know what people's talents and strengths are and what, and how to interact with them, I guess is probably the best way to explain that. Told you about the laptops. Uh, page forty-nine, you might wanna put a tab on page forty-nine. Those are the three things that you really need to be aware of. The first one is you have a financial disclosure that's due on July first of every year for the prior year. You can do that online.
So we did that this year already?
You've done that already and you'll have to do it again by July first of next year again. Then the next one is the ethics training. So that's the one that has to be done before the end of the year. The end of this year, you'll have to do the ethics-
It's online, right?
I completed mine, so that means that's done for all of us.
Yes. It's, it's done for this year then, so when you fill out your financial disclosure, there'll be a box that you check that says, "I've done my ethics training." Okay? And if you want to, you can print your certificate and you can give it to the office to keep, or you can, yeah.
How do I get that link to do that?
I'll send it to you.
Yeah.
If you have it all right, I'll send it to you.
There's several different ones.
There's several ones, great. One, you can just go to the Commission on Ethics and there's free videos you can watch.
Yep, you'll do username, password, and then it, you can do it at your leisure, watch thirty minutes here, an hour there, two hours.
Yeah, to get the certificate at the end.
Yeah, there's something, because like, I was doing mine this year and you have like forty, once you start it, you have forty-five days to finish it. I didn't, you know, just slowly doing it and I was early. And then I forgot about it and then two months later I was doing it and it's, it was all gone, so just whenever you start. And like she said, there's, there's different sites. You can even go to agencies here. Sometimes different, they've held trainings in the county.
But probably the ones that are both suited for us are either from the, either from FADS, from FSBA, from, I took the one from FSU, from the one straight from the Ethics Commission, any of those are kind of more.
And the Superintendent's Association.
Yeah.
And they'll give you a certificate.
Yeah. Voting abstentions, if you have a con, you're required as a board member to vote for or against everything. Unless you have a conflict of interest and then you can abstain. And a conflict of interest means that you have a con, you have a true conflict of interest, it's, I mean, you can see what that is. Yeah, okay. And then in the back of this book, you'll see the contracts for the various attorneys and things that we have that the board hires. It actually has a superintendent's contract in here too, I think. I believe. Yes, he's on page eighty-one. The next attachment thing is B, which is the policy directory. So in your spare time, you might wanna be looking at that. But it's kind of broken up into tabs, but it's kind of, it's the thing that we look back to. To change a policy takes at the minimum sixty days in order to do it. Because with the advertising requirements and everything. And we, so whatever the policy is, that's the policy. So that's the way that we live, that's like our rulebook and we can change it. But if you, if it's, it's almost like if you don't like something in the policy, even if the board decides we don't like this in the policy, it's gonna take us sixty days to change it. So if the, if this is what, it's kind of like, I think of it like the speed limit on the road, you know? If it says that the speed limit is forty and we really want it to be seventy, it's gonna take us sixty days to change it. So for right now, we need to drive forty on the road until we get the thing changed. And so that gives you, we use a service, we use Neola in order to write our policies. Neola writes policies for a bunch of different districts. And then a lot of the policies are given to us with choices to make, like, did you want, you know, they have options. Did you wanna do it A, B, C, or D, you know? Did you want this to be said, or did you want this not to be said? Did you want all of this extra verbiage? Did you not want the verbiage, you know, that type of thing, so.
How often do you update, or will we update the policies?
So right now, we're supposed to be doing a comprehensive update for everything. That's kind of been put on hold, waiting for you two to come in. Because we, since you two will be two out of the five people on the board, it, it almost seems respectful and more appropriate that we do those discussions when we have your input too, so that we're not going back and, and relooking at something. I mean, I think it would be almost rude to be doing a policy and then having you come up and say, "Yeah, I wanna go back and look at that policy, 'cause I really don't think that's what I want to do and I would like to talk to you all about that some more." And then we would be able to have that discussion, but rather than go through all of those motions now and then redo them, we've just kind of shelved them. So you'll be getting a book from Diane that has all the policies in it. Well, actually, it's gonna have like the three chapters, like three groups. It'll be the bylaws and then two other chapters that will be the first ones that we're gonna go through. And they're gonna be color coded, it'll all get explained. As to this is new ones that Neola is recommending that we adopt, these are existing ones, you know, that type of thing. And you can take any, so the existing ones, even though we're not required to do anything, you might wanna look at it, 'cause there might be something on there that you think we should discuss or we should be doing differently, or you would, you know of a more efficient way, or you would just wanna have a discussion about. So you'll be able to do all of those, but we'll, we'll be starting that back up after the first part of the year, so.
Thank you.
And just so, Neil, the pol, any drafts that go before you are legal. Usually, if you have choices, it's just the matter of the board, how they feel. But just, and there's a lot of policies that'll just be, no, there's several we're catching up on and have to, so you're gonna be seeing quite a few, not, so if you're trying to think we're trying to push a bunch through, there's a bunch that need little updates. When a law's changed, there's a lot of things coming, so.
And we're probably gonna pull the ones that have purely law updates and just get those all taken care of at once, so we can get those out of the way and not have them cluttering up the book that we need to do. So, but you'll notice things, I mean, there's some interesting things in there. So there's things like, say, naming a building. There's a policy that has to do with if you're going to, let's see, where is it? Oh, say like ninety-one sixty, public attendance at school events, like what the, what that means. Advertising and commercial activities, relationships with special interest groups, you know? We have a policy on bus capacity. We have a policy, I mean, so we have policies on a lot of things. Petty cash funds. School hours, the school calendar. Just, I mean, but you know, it's a kind of interesting, medical marijuana, we have a policy on medical marijuana. Now, there's some policies you'll notice as you do this, you'll notice that there's, it looks like there's repeat policies. So like the three thousand, the chapter three thousand, starting on page five, all of three thousand deals with teachers. All of four thousand deals with support staff. And then I think it's-
Is it all of four thousand?
All of four thousand in support staff. And then I think it's the one thousand, one thousand deals with non-bargaining. So what that means is, you will see a policy that may repeat itself.
But it's a different-
But it starts with a one, three, or four, depending on which group it is. And, and it may be different, you know, because the rules for a teacher may be different than the rule for a support staff person.
Or a kid.
You know, yeah, but, but for those, as far as employees go, you'll see those three that kind of sit together with each other. You know, so like you'll have, so you'll have eleven seventy, which is substance abuse for non-bargaining. Then you'll have thirty-one seventy, which is substance abuse for teachers. And then you'll have forty-one seventy, which is substance abuse for support staff. And if you took all three of those out, so usually when we look at one of those, like if we were doing something for substance abuse, we would look at all three of those at the same time, because we may be making the same change to all three, but we would always look at those, because those are kind of like mirror policies. You wouldn't do one and leave two of them behind, or do two and leave another one behind. But you know, that, that, so even though it seems like a lot, there's kind of like three chapters there that are kind of like sit, sit on top of each other, okay? Okay, so I talked to you about C, so now let's go to D, which is the budget book.
If you ever are thinking, our policy sometimes it's burdensome and a fine, but if there's something you're worried about, you could email me or Diane, we're here to serve you, so it's all the board, so we could send you that. It's like, "Hey, could you send me the policies surrounding this?" We'll email them to you. You know, we try to, because chances are, if you're wondering, others are wondering. And if you're wondering something, I wanna update too, so feel free to reach out. You know, we'll, we'll do the homework for you a lot of times if you just ask.
And a lot of-
Well, we can find it and send it and it's per, it's right there handy, 'cause chances are, you're gonna bring it up and we wanna, you know what I'm saying? And the courtesy, sometimes if a board member asks me for something, often we send it out to other board members too, not always, but generally, so they have the same information.
But you'll notice, so things like, you know, so remember, we're using Neola as do other districts, right? So let's say it was the substance abuse policy and it was gonna be changed, and here's the recommended change from Neola. Sometimes what I'll do is, let's say that's a policy that we're gonna discuss at a workshop, I will look at other districts that are not Neola districts to see what their policy is, to kind of see what their wording is, to see how they handled a particular, let's say it's a naming of a building, or let's say it's, you know, advertising on a campus, or you know, that type of thing. But if you pick another Neola count, district, you're probably gonna see the same wording that we have or that they're recommending. But if you pick a district that isn't using Neola.
Why wouldn't they use it?
Some people do them in-house, some people have their attorney do them. I mean, so Neola's a contract company that does it. The main reason that people use Neola is to stay up to date, to stay current with the law piece. Because Neola has the capacity, 'cause they're doing it for so many people, that when the legislative changes come through and here's all the new laws, they, they know from their policy which policies need to be changed. So in many cases, if our thirty-one seventy, if the one seventy, whatever it is, one, three, or four, is substance abuse, it's the same number everywhere else. Now, you'll notice ours aren't necessarily like that, 'cause we've had some before we went to Neola that we never changed the numbers on. But you know, but it's, it's just, so if you had something, so let's say it was, I mean, field trips. You know, let's say there's a policy on field trips, you know? You might find language in somebody else's policy that you think would be more applicable or be better than Neola, or you would wanna integrate into Neola.
So you don't have to, you don't have to follow Neola?
No, no. So what typically happens is Neola will make a recommendation and they will footnote or annotate what, why a change was made, like this is legislative, that this needs to be changed this way. It will typically then go through staff and through the superintendent, that in Martin County, we would suggest doing it this way. And they would have a reason that they would say that, that we think that because, you know, X, Y, Z. But they'll give us what their recommendation is. But at the end of the day, remember, policy and budget are on the, on the purview of the school board. And so it doesn't matter, if the superintendent wants to recommend something and staff wants to do it a certain way, if the school board decides this is the way they wanna govern and this is the policy that they want, when we make that determination and say, "No, this is the way we're gonna do it", then everybody has to do it the way that the board has passed the policy to do it, okay? Okay, D, the budget book. So the budget book comes out sometime before the end of the summer. And we usually get one every year. So the way that the budget book is broken down, I noted a few pages. On page one, it gives you the number in the, like, three paragraphs up to the bottom. It's telling you how much S R two and A R P money we have, just so you have that kind of piece in your head, right? On page seven.
When is S R done?
Twenty twenty-four, I think. Isn't S R done twenty twenty-one?
But then there's, there's a few more grants coming out that are kind of related to that, that, like, we have three in the works and the times on those aren't, but they're related around tutoring and different things. But generally, twenty-four.
And you may find, as you talk to other board members, depending on the level of engagement of other boards and how seriously they look at the money, some boards have completely taken that grant money and just, like, left it to, I wanna say, the staff or the superintendent and said, "But our board has made the determination that we take it very seriously, that it's part of our budget, and so we wanna know on a line item basis what that money is allocated for." And so we've approved the allocation of it. We understand what each of those lines mean and look like, so we can sit there and say, "Well, this doesn't look right, or you didn't use enough money here, or you've got money left over here." So the superintendent will make recommendations from time to time, "You've got money left here. We would like to move it to this line, like move it from line seven to line eight, or, you know, whatever, because we've got this money extra, we need to fund this piece more." But at the end of the day, it comes to the board, for the board to determine whether that's what we wanna do or not wanna do. At the same time, you'll see later on that one of the things that was requested by the board was that on our org chart, we designate which positions are being funded by grant money. 'Cause you really don't wanna get yourself in a position where you fund something with grant money, the grant money runs out and you just keep on funding it, because-
Put yourself in a bad situation?
Yeah, and you need to stop and think about whether that's what you wanna do or not, you know? So by identifying them that way gives us the ability to, to say whether that's where we wanna go with it or not. Okay, page seven shows us, that's our notice, that's a capital budget notice. So that's the most recent one that we did. So as far as capital goes, we charge to the millage, we charge one point five mils, which we collect for capital, okay? So what that means is that a, every district does that. So a property-rich district, which we're a relatively property-rich district, a property-rich district will collect more money for capital than other districts will. It makes sense, because property is more expensive and things are more expensive in that district than, say, in a rural district, that type of thing. It's interesting, because my rule of thumb is that St. Lucie County is about twice the size as we are as far as students. So we have eighteen thousand students, they have thirty-six thou, you know, I mean, just do the simple math. They have about twice as much as we have. Their, the amount that they generate in capital is the same, is about the same amount as we generate in capital. Because our property values are higher than their property values. So their capital has to, their capital money has to go twice as far as our capital money has to go. So it's a kind of interesting piece there. But when we do this, this is the thing that the public can use to rely on as to what they would expect to see in the next year. So you'll see like motor vehicle purchases, remember I told you it was technology vehicles and buildings? So motor vehicle purchases halfway down the page, it's purchase up to ten buses, purchase up to eight fleet vehicles, right? So we roll our buses like, um, we have right around a hundred buses. And so a bus lasts about ten years, and then another, then it comes in, that's how they get recycled through, okay? Um, and they do a good job of moving the buses around to kind of maintain the mileage. They don't take, like, it isn't this particular bus that's always going to go to Indian Town, and it's going to run up mileage, and this bus is going to be the in-town bus. They kind of swap the buses around so that the, they can keep the mileage kind of on par, so their yearly mileage is about the same. So we're not driving one into the ground. Um, as you drive around the state, um, you'll notice that there's other districts that have bus issues. Um, and bus issues come when you see buses broken down on the side of the road, and buses that don't look good, you know, that type of thing. We don't really have that problem, we have good-looking buses. It shows you that, you'll see under, two things down from that, payments for educational facilities and sites under a lease purchase agreement. You'll see David Anderson, Jensen Beach Elementary, and Palm City Elementary. So Jensen Beach and Palm City are being paid for by the sales tax, but it was done, but this is the way it had to be done. It had to be done in this mortgage buyback kind of situation, or really only true mortgages at David Anderson, Anderson Middle School. But it shows all of these different things, it shows construction and remodeling. So these are things that if you were a community member, and you were in downtown Stewart, and you had a kid at Stewart Middle School, you would see that at Stewart Middle School, you would be expecting to see an admin and media project going on during the year. So it kind of has, and then that maintenance and renovation and repair piece, kind of up in the middle at the top, is like the ongoing stuff. There's a, a set of ongoing stuff, whether that's, um, new flooring, roofing, painting, um, electrical stuff, chiller plants, lighting, bleacher repairs, gym floors. You know, all that is kind of an ongoing, um, maintenance cycle. We have, we also have, unlike other districts, so usually in a, in a district, this is what you would see every year. You would just get this, this would be worked on, and you would see this. Um, what we have is, mainly because we started with the sales tax thing, we have a, a seven, eight-year plan for maintenance. So even though you see a five-year, you know, it's a five-year capital budget that gets submitted to the state, that shows this is how much you have coming in, and it shows that you will deplete all those funds within five years. But what we did was, when we started the sales tax thing, we went out eight years, and we printed it, did it in groups by school, so that you could see which school was getting what in which year. And you could tell whether it was coming from sales tax, whether it was coming from this, impact fees, whatever the funding source was. But you could kind of look at it on a comprehensive basis. And then that gets rolled every year to be further out. So it's like, this is your current year, and you'll see a five-year plan, but you actually have something that's much more. Because this isn't, this is like the one that you would hand to somebody, or that they would see in the newspaper. Uh, let's see. On page twelve. That gives you the history of, um, F T E, full-time enrollment. So the bottom number that you're seeing now is the eighteen thousand nine sixty-two. Which eighteen thousand nine, nine eighty-two, right? That's our projection enrollment for twenty-two, twenty-three. And then you can look back up, but you can kind of, as you look back up and see, and remember that that includes, um, your charter school, includes everything, right? But as you look back up, you can see that pretty much it doesn't really change that much. And then it kind of gives you, the very first column is traditional schools, right? So we're projecting sixteen thousand seven hundred and fourteen this year, we had sixteen thousand four hundred and sixty-eight the prior year. Now you'll look back up, like, at the beginning, like, the two thousand and six year, two thousand and seven, it didn't really change that much. You know, it shows you traditional up and down gains in that next column, couple hundred. But you'll see the COVID impact with the minus one thousand and eighty-six, do you see that number? You'll see that. And you see the charter schools, what their number is, and how much those have gone up or down. And then you see the scholarship ones, the M K scholarship and family empowerment scholarships. Okay?
There's a good little point on that page, I heard her say, on a lot of charts, you're going to see like traditionals and charters, they're all public school, they're all part of the public system, but we, we regularly refer to, like, our traditional ones, would be our traditional schools and not the charters. You know, the charters are the charters within the public school of Martin County, but we just, those, those are the, within the day-to-day run of our business. The other, the charters have their own boards.
They have their own boards.
We have some oversight, and we work with them, we share some resources and support, but, uh, you know, traditional schools, just know that's, that's, that's the ones that are the day-to-day operation of ours.
That we're, that we're the ones running, that that's the ones that we're paying the electric bill for, that we're supplying the books for, that type of thing, transportation, those type of things. Okay, if you look on page seventeen. And I'm not going to, if you go to the finance training in January, they'll, they'll give you a whole lot more information on how the funding comes down. But I'm just concentrating on page seventeen, on that bottom number. So that one forty-four, one hundred and forty-four million is what our projection is from this whole formula that we would have for our traditional schools. It starts out at the one sixty-six million, do you see that number? And then we take out the pro-rata share for the charters, and we take out the scholarship pieces, which were, comes out to twenty-one million, and it leaves us with one forty-four. Which, and if you can, it's comparing itself to what the end calculation was. So every time they do the student count, the three times a year they, they do the student count, they run this whole big report again. They run an F B F P report again, that kind of shows how it plays out. Because some of these different pieces, you know, you'll look at these, like, if you look up higher, you'll look at, um, line twelve, which is student transportation, or you look at line fourteen, which is teacher classroom supply assistance. So those are based on certain things, there's a formula for each of those, of what those look like. Mental health assistance, um, so you see those pieces up there, but every time they change the number of students, it adjusts what that number is. So that's why you see so many different pieces. So you'll look at, on page sixteen, instead of one forty-four, the conference report, which was what an estimate was based on, was the hundred and forty-three million. So that's not that much different than the, what we're expecting. In some districts, it was vastly different, I mean, like hugely different. Which then you have to kind of regroup and kind of figure out, well, well, wait a minute, what am I doing now, you know, that kind of thing. On page twenty-nine. You'll see the growth, that shows you the growth of the K and the family empowerment scholarships from twenty-ten up until now. And that's money, you know, so there's a lot of misconception out there that, that that's money that's being taken away from the schools. We just serve as a conduit, it's a pass-through. We get the money for those students, we pass that money back out. Um, the only impact it can really have on us is a cash flow impact, but we don't really have that issue. But you'll hear from time to time that people will say, oh, you know, those scholarships are taking all the money away. So in the, I guess you could say in the larger scheme of things, that if there's this huge pot, and this is all the money for public education, that this piece over here, the scholarship kid who never got any money for public education before is now getting part of this pot. But in reality, this pot has gotten bigger and bigger and bigger. So since this pot has gotten bigger and bigger, it's kind of hard to make the argument that these people are taking it away from the pot. Because that eight thousand six hundred now was seven thousand, was six thousand, was a, was a lower number to start with. So once you're making the pot bigger, if you're making the pot bigger and, and you're just passing through this piece, I don't really understand the issue, it's not really a, an issue. So, but you'll hear that from time to time. Um, but the reality is, it's, we just act as a pass-through, we're a conduit, we don't have that problem. Uh, page thirty-three. So page thirty-three is showing you, um, in the far right on the bottom, that's showing you our total number of employees for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, it's what we have allocated for that year. So that's two thousand three hundred and eleven point forty-four, and we figure we'll have about five hundred substitutes. So if you look at that in prior years, you'll also see that it goes back, if you look at that page and page thirty-two, you can see what that number is in prior years. So you can see that that's, and this is by department, by, um, if you look on page thirty-two, it tells you by school. So in nineteen twenty, we had eight hundred and forty-seven people working in schools. And this next year's projection is eight hundred and sixteen for elementary. Then you see middle schools, four hundred and twenty-two, that went to four oh one, you see that? So overall, in, in school personnel, we've gone from one thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven in nineteen twenty, down to one thousand seven hundred and fifteen. Okay? Then you have the special schools, you have adult ed, you have those numbers, and then you have these department numbers. So I, I think the point I want to make is that if you look at your overall school number, so look at the numbers on the bottom of page thirty-two. So we've gone with, from one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five four years ago to one thousand eight hundred and twenty-four. So we're down fifty people, right? Now if you look over to the next page, which is the department page, we've gone from six hundred and eighty-one down to four hundred and eighty-seven. So, a, and that, and that includes grant people, et cetera. But I mean, that, this kind of shows what you can do with efficiency, and how you can, I don't want to say eliminate people, but how you can make, make things run smoothly with lesser people. So there's a, there's a comment that I hear quite frequently of the, um, you know, hey, you're spending all your money downtown, um, you've got all those people working down there in that big building, you know, and, and you need to put the back of the schools. And, and I go back to this, and I'm kind of like, okay, well, wait a minute, what school are you at? So you're at Citrus Grove, so four years ago, you had sixty-seven people there, now you have sixty-five, so you're down four, right? So four, that's like, less than ten percent. Whereas downtown, which people are you talking about downtown? You know, six eighty-one, ten percent of six eighty-one would have been sixty-eight people down, and I'm down more than sixty-eight people. So just so you kind of have those numbers, but they're good numbers to have in the back of your head.
Are some of the decreased positions that haven't been filled?
This is the allocation. So they could not be filled, but this is what they're allocated for.
Okay.
Okay?
We reassess every position now when it goes open, if we need it or not, or has it outgrown itself? Is, is it now, maybe it needs to be a different job description, or can we combine? We've combined some secretarial throughout the district, we've moved some things around, we'll continue to do it. The interesting thing about your budget is, uh, you have to remember, like, just like human resources, everyone that comes to the door, you know, so you have the applicant, you have the whole organization, and then the Board of Education is responsible for, to some degree, after they retire, for like retirement, or the, the compensation and the, uh, of insurance. So I mean, there's a lot of function, not, it's not just the school. Like in H R, they, they keep up with some of the insurance and benefits, and people retire or terminate, that type of thing. So it's bigger than just our employees down here too. And then we, we facilitate the charters. You know, we get a small percentage of that, but, uh, we work with them, we want to make sure they're safe, we want to make sure they're compliant, and they do too. So we, we're all kind of working together, whether it's a pass-through, we're fully responsible for it, but money's coming through here, we care. You know, we want to make sure it's going where it's supposed to go to, so.
Well, and you'll notice that this includes, I mean, that list of, um, the six hundred and eighty-one or the four hundred and eighty-seven includes other positions that it's not just all downtown people. So it's not, even though you see educational technology, et cetera, there, right? It also includes transportation people, it includes maintenance people, it includes, you know, and so there's a lot of other stuff up there too.
And we'll write, we'll get grants sometimes from the state or federal, and it's, it's a program that says you shall have this type of person. So if you have that, it's not always something an existing can do, it's something, like, it's a new program that you have to, if we can streamline it, we will.
So if you look at page fifty-six. Fifty-six gives you an idea in one school, so in one school site, this is the budget for one school site. So what you see, um, at the top of page fifty-six. On page fifty-seven, you see the actual number of students you have, based on, there's a little chart for twenty-one, twenty-two that shows you had eleven pre-K, you had seventy-eight kindergarteners. For a total in twenty-one, twenty-two, you had five hundred and forty-three students, right? And it kind of shows you from twenty-sixteen, seventeen, you had six hundred and fifty-one, and how that number has changed, and now it's five hundred and forty-three. So that five hundred and forty-three, right up above it, shows that you have positions allocated of sixty-four. So there's actually a staffing chart that tells you that for this many square feet, you would need this many custodians. That you would need, you know, for this many students, you would need a principal and an assistant principal, how many media specialists you would get. How many, you know, so there's this whole staffing chart, but when you apply the staffing chart to this number of students, you came up with an allocation of sixty-four point two, okay? So you know that the enrollment was, is five hundred and forty-three, you know that the staffing is sixty-four point two. And then you go back to page fifty-six, and you see overall, it's four point three million. And it shows you all the breakdown on what that four point three million is. The biggest one being the salaries up at the top at three point five. Okay? Then you can compare school to school, so if you slip to the page after that, page fifty-eight, is Citrus Grove. Interestingly, Felix Williams had five hundred and forty-three, Citrus Grove has five hundred and sixty-four. So it's, so pretty similar, I mean, I picked these two schools on purpose, because they were close to being similar, right? The staffing piece at Felix is four, sixty-four point two, at Citrus Grove at sixty-five. And then the, overall budget, it's four point three at Felix, and four point one at Citrus Grove.
And that could be the variance is experience, maybe you can have more experienced teachers.
But it's just an interesting, you know, so you can look back and forth and compare back and forth as to what you actually have. You can actually, and you'll notice, you know, I mean, there's some title schools, you'll notice in a Title I school, that it, it gets a little bit different. But it's kind of, it's an interesting thing when you're looking at the book. I mean, this is something that we didn't have until a couple of years ago.
Title I, just for my clarification, is a, a lower performing school?
It's a lower.
So we have Pinewood and.
It's a poverty, it's based on poverty.
It has students that have lower socioeconomic.
And does that line up with the, the rating of the school as well?
It can, but that doesn't need to be the only measure. I mean, it, it just might show you there's more resources needed, but the board, we really invest some resources there and.
And there are more resources for a Title I school.
Right, so, but that doesn't mean just because it's a, say, a poorer school, has more poverty, doesn't mean you're going to expect low performance, but sometimes.
No, but it often happens that way, yeah.
It can be.
Okay, page one sixteen. So that's the page that has to do with transportation. So that's the transportation budget. So you'll see that the transportation budget, beginning of this year, is five point one million. See that number? Now I want you to flip back to page sixteen at the same time. Sixteen or seventeen, doesn't matter. And you'll see under line twelve, that student transportation is, has a categorical of three point two million, or three point seven million, somewhere in there, right? See line twelve?
Twelve.
Says student transportation?
Yep.
Okay, so what happens is, there's categoricals that the state has said, here's money that you must use to transport students that, that live, that meet certain requirements. So here's the ones you have to transport, right? And we're going to throw some money at that and say, this is designated money. So that money is three point two or three point eight, depending which number you look at. Our actual cost is five million. So which means that we pay the difference. It, it shouldn't be surprising that this number is less than the number you're actually spending. It would, if it were flipped, it would probably be a problem. If I allocated you five million dollars to pay for transportation, but you only had three point eight in cost, you don't need the five million.
Right.
So then you wouldn't be needing to give me the money back. So you would expect it to be in this direction, all right? But just so you have in your head that what happens is, so how do you get the extra one point two million that you need to spend? It comes out of other money, it doesn't come out of the designated money, but it comes out of the other money that's up there. Okay? So depending on who you talk to and where you are, depends on, I mean, there's some strong feelings about transportation, oh, they should put more money at it, they should do this, you know, we should, you know, but. But it is what it is, is pretty much.
Well, we only get paid, and it's not the full reimbursement anyway, like she just showed you, but we only get paid for those students that live, unless they're handicapped, say. That if they're two miles or more, so we can't, you know, we want to be so many more buses, I wish we could.
Is that our policy or state?
The state law.
State laws, two miles.
Yeah. But personally, like, I would love to be able to, I wish, and we're constantly looking at, if something's unsafe, we want to, we look at, uh, uh, dangerous, there's more dangerous areas, there's a designation for it, but. Uh, we'd like to, but one is the funding to be able to do it, and two, right now would be the staffing, but the law kind of puts that, and it is tough.
Yes, Marcia?
No, I was just going to say, when we changed went to the hard line on two miles, we did not eliminate any bus routes. So we kept the same exact number of bus routes, so staffing level was the same before we drew a hard line on the two miles and now.
So the, the interesting thing is, um, so several years ago, that became a, a, an issue, there was a neighborhood in Palm City. That was getting transportation, um, because it was considered a hazardous walking area because they were doing construction. Um, then when the hazardous walking area went away, all those people came out in droves and wanted to continue getting a bus, you know. Well, wait, we had a bus before, some of them, they only knew a bus, you know, their, their kids had only gone while there was a bus, so all of a sudden, they didn't understand why the bus was going away. I, I really think that some of it was a lack of communication of not telling people ahead of time, you know, this is why there's a bus, you know, you need to, you know, I mean. When you tell people after the fact, when you take the bus away, it's harder to kind of, to, to, um, relive from that. So then it became a, okay, well, we need to sit here and look at this, uh, because we know that there's a disparity in how much we're getting to pay for, for busing and how much we're actually paying out for busing. At the same time, another neighborhood came forward and said, um, well, we're not two miles away and we get a bus. And it was kind of like, what? And then it was, well, wait a minute, and well, now that creates a problem, because now I've got one neighborhood that I'm doing something really nice for. Who, they probably could have flown under the radar for another ten years without anybody saying anything if they just kept their mouth shut. But when they came forward, it was kind of like, okay, well, whoa, 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 wait, now we need to look at everything, because it's, it really is an equity problem. If I'm giving your neighborhood a bus. And I'm not giving your neighborhood a bus, and you guys are the same distance away, you know, then it's like, well, why is she more special than you're special? You know, so then it became a more, um, and it is something that I, I think that the board, um, we have one board member in particular who, who feels very strongly that there are some students that should be bused. Not that I disagree, but I mean that, and it's something that we should look at as to how we do that, and there's other issues. You know, we don't, if you're going to a signature program at a high school, you know, so let's say I live in Jensen Beach, but I want to go to the vet program in, um, South Fork High School. I have to provide my own transportation. So there is no transportation for those extra programs. So it, you could, you also have the argument of if I am a student who can't afford to provide my own transportation, that then I'm limited to the programs that my homeschool provides. So, and if I were a student who couldn't afford my own transportation, living up in Jensen Beach, and I really wanted to be in the vet program. It, it just isn't a reality, I mean, I'm, I'm limited by what's there. So there's a lot of other issues, and, and different districts handle it different ways. You know, and there's a lot of challenges, I know that Palm Beach County several years ago bought a routing system to kind of like do their buses, which was a disaster. So they bought this routing system, which was going to be great, and then they had kids, there was no bus for some kids, buses were coming hours late, there was like, you know. I mean, it was like a, a huge disaster, so transportation's always, um, been kind of an issue, but.
Just so you know, the, the average bus driver that's employed by Martin County's school board, uh, drives three routes. So the elementary start at seven in the morning, the high school's at eight, and then the middle school's at nine, so that person generally drives an elementary route. And then they drop the kids, they right away go on the high school route, then they go right on the middle school route, so. They, we run a, a three-tiered system, is what we call it, some, some do a two-tiered system, some do a one. But generally, we run a three, so it's pretty efficient as far as what you can do with the fewest number of drivers and the buses, and it just makes sense when they have the staggered times.
So then it's six routes a day?
No, three, yes, three in the morning, three in the afternoon.
And they get a full day's pay, you know, I mean, imagine if you were just running one route in the morning and one route in the afternoon.
Money to check their bus, and then, and then sometimes in the middle of the day, some of the drivers transport some different kids, like maybe they're doing a field trip. Maybe they're doing a, uh, some different programs from our high school where kids go to a job site or special needs type thing, so some drive additional, but the average is three. I mean, they each have an elementary route, a middle and a half.
And then, do you have special, not special drivers, but different drivers for like sporting events and things like that after school?
Uh, some of those same drivers, it's, it's unionized, so they bid, uh, everything has to be bid, unless it's an emergency. Uh, it has to be bids, so those drivers typically the ones that's gone on a seniority basis and then it goes down, but, yes.
You stipend for that?
Mm-hmm.
But there are bus drivers that specifically drive after-hours field trips, like just sporting events.
Yeah, that only.
They don't get home until nine, ten, quarter o'clock at night.
Okay.
We have some that just like a sub, some just want to do morning routes, we have some do afternoon, so we, we're pretty flexible if we'll get them, we, we get it covered, but it's been tough with COVID. We fared better, I'd say we fared better than about every district in the state of Florida.
We did, and I think some of that was the flexibility of you only want to drive one route, you could drive one route. And there's a lot of people who are digging in who, you know, if you want to be a bus driver, you're got, you're a full-time bus driver, you know, and it's kind of a.
Well, our team, our team has done great at the bus garage because they're driving every day, like, there could be a mechanic or a, a route specialist that drives a route. And we, they have to do their jobs some after, we do a little bit of overtime, but we kept consistent on our routes, so.
Oh, and that is something that we do, is that everybody who works at transportation can drive a bus, so that if somebody doesn't show up. We don't have an issue, we have a.
Meaning management.
Yeah, we have a bunch of people who can go out and drive buses, so.
Built in subs.
Yeah, it works, so.
That's great.
Page one fifty-seven. Is kind of a summary, remember we were talking about that four point three million and four point oh million for Felix and Citrus Grove? You'll see those there in the blue shaded column. And I kind of marked on mine, you might want to mark on yours, are title-one schools, so Seawind is a title-one school. J.D. Parker is a title-one school. Port Salerno, Hope Sound. Warfield and Pinewood. So six out of our twelve elementaries are title-one schools. And then in middle schools, we have Murray. Indian Town. And Anderson. I think it probably would be helpful if you had the, um, FTE from each of these schools on this page too, but it isn't on there. You know, you'd have to look back to get it, to put it in, but we probably should make a note that next year it should be included on there. On this page.
Happy to take you out sometime, you're happy to visit on your own, but I'm also happy to take you out if you ever want to. And we would just advertise if two of you wanted to go, we could not be talking business, but just talking, I could take you and tour you some of the schools and meet you at Jensen, say, Beach High School, or. Uh, let you visit, if you want to see Felix Williams, maybe there's a school, I know you live like San Hope Sound, but maybe you want to understand the Jensen schools a little bit more, you know, I could. Take you just, uh, we'd advertise it's a tour and show you, Citrus Grove, Warfield, but Indian Town would be its own little hour and a half, because we, I'd take you to the, uh, the preschool, the Perkins. And then I'd take you to the elementary school, and then I'd take you to the middle school, and probably take you around the community just a little bit to see, you know, how they live and where the developments are.
Okay, sounds good.
On page one eighty-five. That's showing you descriptions or positions that are being funded by these grants, just so you get some idea of what those look like. So we have forty-five that are approved, thirty that are filled, and fifteen that were vacant as of the date of this.
And when are they expired? Twenty, twenty-four?
So they expire, you'll see the different times they expire, so like the network engineer, it goes all the way through the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. But you'll see some of those, like the district registered nurse, only goes through the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, so there's no mark over to the right for her.
Well, ASR funds, if we don't use it, we lose it, correct?
Correct.
Bless you.
Uh, you know, so when the, those funds first came out, the issue was. They were supposed to be for a like two-year time period. So people tended to be hoarders, the recei, receivers of those funds tended to be hoarders, and tended to make plans like, which, okay, I can understand that. Well, I'm going to use some now and I'm going to save some, you know, et cetera, and hoarded money, I mean, you know. So what happened was, and that was what was happening last year through the legislature, it's like, hey, you guys have, you know, X million dollars and you've spent, what, ten percent of it? You know, it was those kind of things, which was true, because, and a lot of it was, yeah, but, but some of those are plans for the future kind of thing. So some of that was, if you hadn't spent it, they took it back and then gave it back to you kind of thing. But, but it is quite common in the educational business world for there to be grants out there that people don't use all their grant money. That they leave money on the table. Now, now we found that we have asked for reports on a regular basis that tell us how much we have left, when is this expiring and how much do we have left? You know, when is this one expiring, how much do we have left? Because we need to kind of know if we're going to use it or not use it, so we're not just sending money back without knowing.
You want to use it wisely.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes there's requirements of the grant, ASR was one of them, they wanted a, the, it was a federal grant that passed to the state, but the state kind of had some control. And there was such requirements on it, and like, so if you said, you know, we wanted to hire X number of teachers or nurses, well, if they weren't available, you know, you had to post it, but if you didn't get hired. You post for a couple, three months, you can't find them, then that money wasn't used, so then you have to have a process of the board agreeing to something else, so. The shortage hurt on some things, you know, you try to do, you can't, if you can't find, if we can't find a person to do the job, we, we have to comply with the grant. So I'd rather give it back, you know, we're not going to say we did something that we didn't, so, you know what I'm saying? Sometimes staffing.
Are these vacant positions because you don't need them, or, um?
Uh, which, which one do you want?
No, because we can't find them.
Forty-five approved, thirty filled, fifteen vacant. On page one eighty-five, the bottom.
Yeah, if they're, oh, no, if they, if they're not filled, it's because we couldn't find them.
And when was this as of? Is this very recent?
Yeah.
Okay. None of the other, so everything here is up to date?
Yeah, like, we've not been able to find jobs, and you see dashes, paraprofessionals, now we hope with the fifteen-dollar rate change, that's going to help us, so I'm so glad, you know, we were able to do that. Uh, but some of it, we, we could not find a position, so then we have unencumbered funds that the board, we'd use it for something else, they reallocated. Yeah, finding people to do more, and we fared better than a lot of districts on that too. Really.
So page two hundred has the trim calendar from last year. And this is, it's really very set, you know, the property, what's the way that the system works is. Property appraisers certify how much their property value is, in, you know, their taxable value for their county, then that number goes to the state. Then the state has that nut, money, they have that number, so they know how much they can generate based on that number. Then they send it back to us, we have to give them a budget, the superintendent has to propose a budget by a certain date, twenty-four days within certification. Then we've got where advertisement must happen, you see, you can see all these dates in here. Um, the advertisement must happen within twenty-nine dates, we have to adopt two to five days after the advertisement. Then we have to, um, advertise, do the E-trim within thirty-five days from July first, then we have to adopt a final milligan budget. So ours is probably the most, um, I don't want to say convoluted, but the most prescriptive one of what exactly we have to do. So we usually have, we have first choice, I mean, we set our trim dates and then everybody else follows after us, because it's kind of like, we've got dates that we have to meet. So those dates that you see, this was last year, those three dates that you see with the four PM, the five oh five, and the five oh five. Those are the three dates that are specified dates that have to happen in, within a certain period of time. So next year's calendar is trying to overlay those dates on dates, you know, and it's in the middle of summer when it's hard to find. Try to fit in with people's schedules. So, um, we, we are trying to overlay those dates so they're happening on normal dates when we would normally be having a workshop or a meeting. So that we aren't trying to come up with something in the middle of something when somebody might not be around. But you'll see that the first part of November, to be able to see whether those trim dates look like they would work. Okay?
And the, the board can operate as long as there's a majority, and I think most, there's time to time that you're not going to be able to come to every meeting, but you can see some of those meetings are so set, prescriptive. If, if we don't get a quorum, we've missed a whole advertising cycle, so the board stays abreast, see each other, they trust. If once in a while there are a member has, can't be there, but as long as the majority can go on.
Three, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so wherever, is there ever, does a supermajority ever come into play in a school? Nope, just curious.
Could be in the policy, but.
Yeah.
Certain issues, but we don't have that.
We don't have it. Okay, continuing on, you'll see attachment E. Which is the calendar that was approved last year. So last November, December, this is the calendar that was approved for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Sometimes, you know, you're talking about the supermajority, there could be a misunderstanding with the board and community sometimes, like they think the board approves everything, well. The board will not, usually, when there's been business, if they're not ready for something, they don't talk about it, or they workshop it. And they come to an agreement in a workshop, then they, when it comes in the meeting, everybody felt pretty good about it, so. It's not like, um, everybody just, wh- while most things do pass five oh, that's not because, it's just rubber stamping, it's because, one, there's experienced board members. And two, they've already talked about it a great deal, because believe me, if there's one that doesn't fill, they'll say something, either before or during the meeting, but just know that.
Okay. Good job.
So F and G, tabs F and G are the contracts, and these are older contracts, um, you'll, there'll be a new one coming out. So the first one is, F is the teachers' union, which remember has one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven teachers. The things that are bargained are time, money, and terms of employment, time, money, terms of employment, those are the three things you always bargain. So you'll see, this is their contract, which kind of has everything spelled out in here. And typically, what happens is, we would have, there's executive sessions and there's bargaining sessions. Executive sessions are sessions that school board members go to with the bargaining team. Bargaining sessions are sessions that the bargaining team has with the union. And they kind of run one after the other, because if, so for instance, imagine if at a bargaining session, something is proposed, but they need feedback from the board. It doesn't make any sense for them to have another bargaining session until they get the feedback from the board. So I think I've sent you all the calendars for the twelve sessions that we have outlined already. So we had our first executive session yesterday, the first bargaining session is today. They do tape those, so you can watch those at your leisure, so if you wanted to see what was going on at those bargaining sessions, you would be able to see that. Um, and then once you become board members, once you're sworn in, then you need to keep track of the ones that come after that for the executive sessions. Okay?
Yeah, our first one is going to be.
Yes, I know.
Zooming. While we're traveling, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, who, who makes up the, um. Union side of the, the bargaining? So it's this, like, last night's meeting was the school board and the bargaining team, who is on the bargaining team?
So if you look on the first page of the.
Of F?
Of F, flip the page.
Okay.
That shows you who the negotiating team members are. So Michael Spelman is the attorney that we hire to do that, right? Then we have somebody from human resource, somebody from finance, professional standards, then we have representatives from different schools, risk, et cetera, right?
We need to update that up, some names, but that's generally.
But that's typically what we would have, and their team is the team that's up at the top, right? Um, but when we have an executive session, we don't, all these people don't come to our executive session, they come if they have input to us. So that if we need to hear from, for instance, let's say we needed to hear from risk and benefits, we would have the risk and benefit person come and talk to us. If we needed to hear something from curriculum instruction to understand a point of view, we would have that person come and, come and talk to us. If we needed to hear something from curriculum instruction to understand a point of view, we would have that person come and, come and talk to us. Now, the top section, the negotiating team members. That's their people. Are they all at every meeting? So they're, they're, so at the negotiating meetings, you would see this whole list of people. Okay, gotcha. And will that, when do they change, so to speak, what is it? So they would, this is who they had back in twenty-twenty, I'm not sure who they have, so tonight, you'll be able to tell who they're having this year. Okay. No, I mean on the, this top one. On theirs. So that comes from M C E A. So we know that Gary Simmons will be there, 'cause he's their state representative. We know that Karen Resaniti will be there because she's their union president. I meant, when do they have their, don't they do? Oh, whenever they want to, we don't have anything to do with that, so we don't. So their internal meetings.
Officers and things like that.
When do they elect new officers?
Oh.
It's, uh.
March, April?
I know the Lisa Edwards is coming up this spring, I need to check on, uh.
I don't know.
Find out M C E A.
Just curious, because this team might change before.
It could.
The contract is approved, correct?
Kinda like the board might, though. So it's a live-in body politic?
Yeah.
Generally speaking, unless it changed significantly, a big majority, they, they lean a lot on their, like Gary is their main person, and say Karen, and, you know, they have a course of vocal members, but they kinda have a general philosophy they, they stick pretty tight to.
Okay. Yeah.
As does Ask Me, like, they, they lean a little heavier. Lisa's been doing it a long time, she's fantastic, too. She, they have a person, his name's Hector, they lean a little heavier on that, just for consults, like their state person, so they can have legal consult, things like that.
Okay. So anyway, so that's their contract, and then Ask Me's contract is under G. And that's their contract. Then I told you earlier about the insurance calendar, so if you look at H, that's the calendar that you should expect for insurance for this year.
Okay.
So we have had, so we're sitting right now at, the only thing we've had really so far is we've seen this calendar.
Okay.
Okay. And then there's some internal things that happen. But this is pretty much what happens. And then I, you have I already, that was the executive sessions and the bargaining sessions, so so far they've agreed to six, six negotiating sessions, and we have twelve executive sessions scheduled.
Okay.
Then J and K are phone numbers and extensions. So J is the one that's the department people, and K is the school people. Once you become a board member, you'll get something every month that has events at every school.
She loves this part, she is choked up every year.
That has events at every school. Yes.
Sounds pretty good, doesn't it?
Wasn't it, yes. So as a board member, it's written in statute that you have the ability to go to any school anytime you want to, unannounced. That's the rule.
Okay.
And it's up to you to determine how, what you wanna do about that. Personally, I've found that if there's something in particular that I'm looking for, something I wanna see, something, that I usually call and let them know ahead of time. Just 'cause I'm, I'm not a surprise kind of person. And plus, because the thing I wanna see might, might or might not be happening at that point in time, you know. So. But you do have the ability and the right to show up anytime you want to. You should bring your badge, and they'll, they would scan you in and make sure that, you know, but.
I'm a planner, I'm not spontaneous, so I will probably call them.
Yeah.
Well, I'll just share, too, like, it's, like, that's a board member's privilege, anytime, but if anything's real important to you, it's important to me, too, I mean, if a board member's really gung-ho about an issue, whether it's food service, or whatever the issue is, reading, or, or science, or some issue, if you'll, if you'll let me know, I'll try, maybe, or somebody from my team can go, 'cause they can, one, they can help educate you on it, and two, if that's gonna stay something that you're really interested in, I wanna, I wanna know and be part of that, too, to help make the change that you might wanna see, or help inform you of what's going on, you know what I'm saying? So, we're here to help you, we're all on the same team, you know, we're, so, you have our support.
Okay, L is student code of conduct. So in the student code of conduct, you have, page nine, or page nine, talks about attendance. The way the student code of conduct is made up, starting on page fourteen, is that there's different levels of, let's call it unacceptable behavior. The lower the level, the less serious it is. So for instance, in level one, it includes being tardy, coming late to class. It includes not adhering to the dress code, not wearing your school I D, you know, just little things like that, right? The next page, page fifteen, shows a column of elementary and a column of middle school, of possible consequences that would be followed for a level-one violation. And then you move on and you get level two, and then it moves up, and when you get to level three, level three are the school environment safety incident reporting items, they're called C S R, it's on page twenty-one. They have little three-letter acronyms, like F I T is fighting, D, D R D is drug sale or distribution, and those are things that get reported to the state. So the state keeps a database as to what those type of activities are. And then you see on page twenty-four, you see the alternatives, or the, the sanctions or the responses to level-three behavior. Page twenty-eight is due process, that talks about what the students' rights are. Everybody has rights, that defines those. Page thirty-nine is, has a special section about transportation. Page forty-four is technology. And then forty-seven is dress code. So it's kind of all in one document. This year, when the students did their, acknowledged that they received a student code of conduct book, you'll see on page ninety-two, they had to acknowledge that they received it. Parent or guardian had to acknowledge that they got it. But this year, unlike other years, they also got page ninety-three at the same time. So it was all done at one time, that's the photo release P P Ps, the yearbook pictures,
That's good.
Electronic progress reports, that kind of thing, so you could do it all. And I think they could do it online, couldn't they, Dr. Moss? They could fill this whole thing out online and not have to.
We're trying to put more there, too.
Yeah.
We're trying to get more of our parents to do that, because of the electronic world and all, I mean, we can, we can notify them faster, we can just provide so many more services, so yes.
So much more.
Keep up with their grades, I mean, attendance and things like that.
Is the dress code uniform throughout the district?
It's uniform, like, on a minimum standard that the Martin County School Board sets, but there is some leeway that the board allows, and the state of Florida gives, too, for the, what's called the SAC committee, the school advisory committee, and there's a district one, too. They can choose to be, most of ours now have gone back to just the general district one. You'll see a little bit of variance at the high schools, but that's kind of always work in progress. Some of them are, there's more of a uniformity, like, some of our schools may have a collared polo, type shirt, or a school T-shirt. They're pretty, I don't wanna say, they're pretty general, though, no one has a super tight.
So you'll see on page forty-eight, about a third of the way down, these aren't inclusive, a service, a guide, et cetera, individual schools may have a stricter dress code approved by their SAC, but they must be justified, blah, 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 to do all of this, and the dress code must be reviewed and approved by the superintendent before implementation.
Okay.
So they can't come up with something completely bizarre.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if a school at the last minute wants to change something the week before school starts, like, I just can't do, you know, if it's significant, go to uniformity type thing, it's like, you gotta give parents a heads up, it's gotta be, we just can't do it. It's not, no, it's just low. And it has to be something I think that the Martin County Board would be all right with.
Okay. So, so one of the things in dealing with large groups of people is, there's a difference between something that's a single incident and something that's a pattern. You know, that if it's a pattern of behavior that, that happens repeatedly, or a pattern of something that's happening, it's almost like it's something that obviously needs to be addressed, right? A lot of times, single incidents are a single incident that may not need a major overhaul to a policy or to something. And I think the same holds true for the code of conduct. You know, it's, it's not the kind of document that you would use to address one particular thing that one student did on one day, and so I need to now be sure that everybody, you know, it's, 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 it's not like that. I mean, it's, I mean, think of road traffic signs on the road, you know? You put up signs, so let's say you wanted to say, pets in the area, you know? That if you had a dog run out into the road one time, it might not warrant a pets-in-the-area thing.
Right.
But by the time you realize that you've got a hundred pets, and it's happened five or six times, and it's, you know, and this is an ongoing issue, then maybe a pets-in-the-area sign is warranted, you know, so it's that kind of thinking, that it's.
Okay.
You know? Attachment F, or M is the CAFR. That's our comprehensive financial report. So this is the one from last year, so we pretty much do one of these every year, not all districts do this. But it's an interesting document to read, 'cause it gives a lot of historical info. So like, in the very beginning, like, the little Roman numerals I, 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 talks about accomplishments and initiatives that happened in that last year. So you'll have, you know, economic outlook and condition, the profile of the government, I mean, you have some, some interesting kind of information, financial policies, budget controls. On page X I I and X I, eleven and twelve, Roman numerals, you'll see the certificates that we've received for filing, that we have certificates of excellence in the morning. On page fifteen, you'll see a list of our capital assets that we have. So we have three hundred, where it's considered, we have three hundred, by the accountants, that we have three hundred and sixty-four million dollars in assets. So we have land, construction, building, equipment, you know, that type of thing. There's two things that are on the horizon that you should be aware of. One is, that involve collaborations with other groups. One is a building that's being built under a lease agreement with the Boys and Girls Club at Stewart Middle School. And then the other one is the Arts Council on the other building. So both of those are lease agreements that are being worked through the process, that there'll be some things that.
That we will, we will lease out to them.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're, it's like, so Boys and Girls Club, they're building a building on property that we will have some use of, and they will have some use of. And then the Arts Council is a lease where they will do certain things to that building, and make it available to us, make it available to the public, et cetera. Yeah, it's, it's the old, it's where the meetings are.
Yeah.
It's at the old Stewart.
Those three buildings, two out front, the main, only meeting, that's gonna be the.
That'll be them, okay. But anyway, page fifteen is the capital assets. There's all kinds of information in here. If you look at page one forty-six, one forty-six and one forty-seven, actually, even one forty-four, one forty-four tells us our population and our student population. So it shows that we've grown in ten years, we've grown from a hun, in the county, we've grown from a hundred and forty-nine thousand people to a hundred and sixty-one. Our students have grown from like eighteen thousand to about eighteen thousand still. You see, it's seventeen, nine sixty-four, and eighteen oh fifty-seven, so it's like, it's not really, you know.
Twenty-twenty-two's number for population is gonna be?
Yeah. Then you look at page one forty-six and one forty-seven. That shows you total employees. Breaks it down, instructional administrators, non-instructural administrators, principals, secondary teachers, E S E teachers, psychologists, librarians, clerical, unskilled laborers. And it gives it to you for the last ten years. Okay. Then if you look on page one fifty-one, starting at page one fifty, I guess, starting at page one fifty, so every year, there's a report that comes out, it's called the FISH Report, Florida Inventory of School Houses. And it kind of tells you in each building, when it was built, which buildings were built when, what the square feet were, what the capacity is, what the enrollment is. So this kind of gives you an idea, say, Seawind Elementary, you can tell from twenty-twelve to twenty-twenty-one, it hasn't changed at all, still has the one hundred twenty-seven, three hundred and fifty square feet. And still has.
How did it change in two thousand and fifteen? Was that a typo? It jumped up and then it went back steady the whole way over.
I don't know.
Did you have maybe like a small trailer or something that was up there?
Might have been, might have been.
Is there, yeah.
Was there a trailer in two thousand and fifteen? Could have been, one there and then taken down. Yeah, a thousand square feet.
Yeah, and it could.
Could have been.
It could have been a typo.
It probably was, because capacity wouldn't go to a trailer. So portables don't count for permanent capacity, so that capacity stayed the same. But you'll see, I mean, so as you look through these, you know, I mean, it kinda goes page by page. And you can see, when you go to one fifty-four, which is high schools, you'll see what the capacity of the high schools are, and what the enrollment is, and the number of square feet. So that's kinda interesting. On page one fifty-nine are some basic statistics. Operating expenditures, your student membership, the cost per student, the change, the teaching staff, and the ratios. So that's just some basic stats there. The preceding page is employers for the whole county. And then one sixty and one sixty-one is food service information. So it is giving you information like, how many days, so in twenty-twenty-one, how many days meals were served, how many meals were served, kind of, you wanna, the two numbers you wanna concentrate on is kind of like the total revenues and the total cost. So you obviously don't want your cost to be higher than your revenue. Sometimes they are, though. Okay, the only other thing I wanted to go over was, so there's professional development that you get. You can get that from Florida School Board Association, there's also a bunch of things that you can do online. And I'll start again with sharing those at Information Share when we do our school board meeting, and share those things if you wanted to, you know, there's a whole multitude of things, whether it has to do with progress monitoring, whether it has to do with arts education, whether it has to do with safety, there's all kinds of things that I come across all the time. And so I just, I'll start sharing those out again. I told you about the ethics and the financial filings. On this sheet, I gave the phone number, the overall phone number, the two-one-nine, twelve-hundred, and the two people in the superintendent's office, Diane Falls and Lindsay Tarpley. For comparison counties, and when you start doing things with the Florida School Board Association, they, they try to encourage you, which kind of helps, to compare yourself with like-sized counties. So, because they, they have the same challenges, you know, I mean, the challenges of a huge county doesn't really reflect what we have, you know, I mean, their ability as far as doing something legally or doing things on their own. So let's say it's whether it's writing policy or something. The ability for somebody to write policy on their own when there, you know, millions of students, is a lot different when you have eighteen thousand students, you know? So our comparison counties, the four that I use are the ones closest in population to us. Remember, we're looking at about nineteen thousand here in Martin County. Citrus County on the other side has about sixteen thousand, Charlotte has about seventeen thousand, Indian River about seventeen, and Hernando about twenty-five thousand. Citrus County on the other side has about sixteen thousand, Charlotte has about seventeen thousand, Indian River about seventeen, and Hernando about twenty-five thousand. So those are the ones that if you tried to look, so when you're looking at, um, the numbers on the F.E.F.P. report, or you're looking at things, those are the ones that are close to us. The ones that are adjoining counties and their F.T.E. numbers, St. Lucy is forty-six thousand, remember, said it's about twice as big as we are. Palm Beach is a hundred and ninety-four, they're about ten times bigger than we are, and then Okeechobee, which is at six thousand.
So we're usually only informed by what's happening. People say, there, this district's doing that. It's like, we're only informed by our board because we're not quite like them. We care, but we're Martin County, and it's very, but we can turn easier than they can, and-
So a lot, so a lot of things, like, so when, when you hear that, um, so it's just like rule of thumb kind of thing, so when you hear that, um, Palm Beach County, right, has six hundred teacher vacancies, and they're ten times bigger than we are, then you would think, okay, well, to be on par with that, I should have about sixty teacher vacancies. I mean, it's just like a kind of way to kind of sway without having to, like, do a whole lot of real hard math.
Right.
It's just a, an easy way to kind of see that, so. Any questions?
No, not right now.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and I think you have plenty of information, um, and we look forward to working with you.
Uh, not, not, not that it's advice, it's just the truest thing I've learned, it's like, most of what you're going to get contacted, no, not everybody's going to call you and say, "I love what's going on," most of what you're going to hear is going to be an issue, but truly, when you think of how many students and how big of the responsibility that you all have, when you get contacted, some, we take it seriously, but the majority of what goes on is very good. I mean, but you're going to end up hearing sometimes, it's like, all, all I ever hear is complaints. Well, that's like mine, I get a lot, I don't get all the calls and the, that give the, the kudos, I have to go out and see it. So I just encourage you to go out and see our schools some, and just see things, because, you know, you're like I say, you don't get those pat-on-the-back calls usually. And I'm happy to help you with this visits.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're done.